Called over this Lacey City Council meeting on January 16, 2020. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a published agenda. Is there any additions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda items.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved tonight's agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up, under Public Recognitions and Presentations, is our compassionate community recognition. Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What a wonderful group we have here tonight. This is packed. We are a few weeks late due to the holiday season, but tonight we get to recognize our fourth quarter 2019. Compassion is contagious recognition. So our first recognition award is for an extraordinary woman who has a special tie to our city family. Pam Kesselberg, along with her friends and family, have been supporting homeless and disadvantaged children and families within our North Thurston School District for years. And Pam's husband Jerry retired from our Lacey Police Department in 1988 after 18 years of service. And the work that Pam and her team does is in honor of Jerry's life to fulfill what his passion was before passing away in 2018. Pam now runs the Grinch Family Foundation, as well as Kids Meals on Wheels, to reach those children and family who need help. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Pam and invite her to share more about the difference that they're making in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm just very privileged and honored. And I promised I wouldn't cry, but I'm also very, very humbled for this award, specially given by Jerry in my city, as she said Jerry was a retired police officer. We do Meals on Wheels. We do that during spring break and also summer break. It is funded off of, let's see if this is... Okay, that's fine. That's fine. We deliver food bags to low-income, and we do this through partnering with Thurston County Food Bank Kids Program, North Thurston School District, and Lacey City Parks and Rec. This year, through spring break and summer, we delivered over 9,000 meals. At, which just blows my mind. Number one, that we'd have such a need. But number two, do you know how they always say it takes a village? Forget it. It's the power of a few. That's all it takes. My cousin and I raise the funding through our charity bake sales, and we have 11 events a year. And in May, we have two on the same day, and there are two young people sitting here, Alexis and Johnny, if you would just wave. They run one of the bake sales for us, and they help us with the food distribution. And our big ultimate thing of the year is Thanksgiving and Christmas. Thanksgiving, we host on Thanksgiving Day dinner for... There they are. We host Thanksgiving dinner for homeless. Prerequisite, you have to have a child in the North Thurston School District. You have to be referred to us by North Thurston School District, who's also, who nominated me for this award. But we do, my, we're not a village. We don't meet that description. We might meet a tribe, but we're really just family. And we do this dinner every year for students and their families who are homeless. And all of our connections are through the public schools. And so Brenda works very close with me, and so does Kathy Owens from Lacey Parks and Rec. And at Thanksgiving time, all of us get together and we do this wonderful dinner. The Frost family, and they're here, they do the Olympia Bear Beer Ham. The recipe was given by Olympia Brewery. They make the ham every year. My son Pete and James make the turkey and the gravy, and they have mashed potatoes, twice-baked potato, green beans, and the best desserts in the world. And we also have, let's see if I can, oh, well. We also have this big table, almost as big as that part over there, that we have clothes that have been donated, warm clothes, that the kids can go and choose clothes, hats, gloves, personal hygiene. And we also have books, because you know what? Book reading, number one, it's so important. But I was orphaned as a child, and you know what? That reading, it helps you to escape the reality of the situation you're in, and you can create dreams. So I think that it's, oh, well. The book part, I think, is wonderful. Last Thanksgiving, we had this big round table, and hanging from that table were coats, brand-new coats that were donated. It was so cool to see these two little girls, sisters. And they went up and checked all those coats, and they picked matching coats. And then we have a lady who is, I think, 94. Is that right? 91. And she hand knits hats for those kids. And she knits all year round so that they'll be there. So the kids get coats and hats and warm gloves, and they get all the leftovers from the meal. And then come Christmas, that's our second big thing of the year. And at Christmas, Brenda hooks this up with families, and they are families that live in their car tent or an RV, that there's no use giving them a turkey because they have no way to cook it. And so for Christmas, we put them up in the motel in the Super 8. They gave us a great, great deal, 68 a night. And there's two double beds to a room, and so the families can come there, be in a warm place, and even have TV. And we, on Christmas Eve, they have pizza that is donated by Forelly's. And then Christmas Day, they have breakfast at the motel, and then they just walk to Denny's for their Christmas dinner. And they can choose whatever they want, and then I pay the bill after. So nobody is limited. And it's amazing. You look at the receipt, all the milkshakes. So nobody is limited. And it's amazing. You look at the receipt, all the milkshakes. The kids love, you know, they can look and choose their own milkshake. Each room is decorated. They have a Christmas tree. They have gifts. This year, we had a mother that was so excited to be a part because she would be able to take a bubble bath. You know, that's something that wasn't available to her. And it kind of brings tears because, you know, little things that we think are, we take for granted. But to someone else, they're big, they're important. We also have the Grinch Family Foundation, and we provide scholarships to the Olympia Tumwater Foundation, to Life Pacific University. And then the Grinch Foundation also provides tuition, not really tuition, it's reimbursement for books. And it's amazing, the kids that we've given scholarships, they'll come back and give you a hug. One, I didn't mention this at Thanksgiving, probably one of the most humbling things for me, is when these people come and they give you a hug, and they say, "Bless you." I mean, excuse me? Don't we have the tables turned? Aren't we supposed to be blessing them? But in conclusion, I want to say, I am just an ordinary great granny. And I have extraordinary family and friends that, together, we're making an impact. And I want to thank you. And thank you, Brenda.
So on behalf of the Lacey City Council, it's really our great honor to give you this 2019 Compassion is Contagious Recognition Award. And thank you so much for everything you do for our community. We really appreciate it.
Our second compassionate community award tonight is for the volunteers with the organization Stand Up for Kids. This is another wonderful group of people who are working hard to lift up our homeless youth. They are a nationally-recognized nonprofit that works with our homeless youth to support and provide services to those who need it. The Olympia chapter serves youth throughout the Thurston County community and is making a great impact. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Danny Burkett, the Executive Director, to tell you more about the organization.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Lacey Council, and community. We are honored to receive this most gracious award of compassion. First, I give honor to God because of His grace and mercy we are here today. We have been a constant example of how you can help those in need by working hard, as it is better to give than it is to receive. Thank you, team, for being great supporters with kind hearts, showing love, hope, and encouragement to our youth who do not or may not have any place to call their home. You are appreciated. Thank you very much. At this time, I was wondering if any team members might have a few words to say. With that being said, now let's get to... I'm here alone. Now let's get to the fun part, our presentation. Am I doing this right? Oh, there we go. Who we are. Founded in 1990 as a group of volunteers, Stand Up for Kids is a national-recognized nonprofit charity that works directly with thousands of homeless youth across the country with locations in 18 cities. There are four in the Washington State, and we are one of them. Our Olympia chapter is completely volunteer-run and sustained. Our mission statement: End the cycle of youth homelessness, celebrating every youth's life through love, hope, and encouragement. Our vision statement: No youth left behind, receiving a safe, supportive, and loving place to lay their head down and call their own. What we do, we do street outreach, mentoring counseling, apartment assistance, youth socials, engage, connect, and sustain, and so much more. Resources that we offer: Clothing, bus passes home, food, mentoring, education, job assistance, hygiene packs, ID assistance, and so much more. We're celebrating 30 years this year as a national. This chapter here in Olympia has been around for 10 years. Our 2019 year in numbers, as you can see, interventions conducted 979, meals provided 919, families assisted 41, nights of shelter provided to at-risk youth 19, and volunteer hours 2,922. What our goals are for 2020: Pilot host homes, increase overall contacts made with youth by 50%, educate the public and raise awareness surrounding the issues of youth homelessness. Now, this is the very, very good fun part. 2019 wrap-up video, our ages that we conduct are 12 through 24.
Thank you.
So this is our last of the 2019 Compassion is Contagious Recognition Awards. And after looking back at 2019, one thing I can say is that we have just so many different organizations and individuals in our community that's truly making a difference. So it's an honor to be able to give you this Compassion is Contagious Recognition Award on behalf of the Lacey City Council. Thanks for everything. Keep up the great work.
Thank you so much to all the volunteers in the room. And at this time, I'd just like to invite the guests with both groups to the room next door for some refreshments. Thank you.
Thank you. As they clear out, we'll go on to our next recognition. And it's the recognition of William Moore for Civil Service Commissioner. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Scott Spence.
So I'd like to call up William Moore or Bill Moore. How you doing, Bill? Good to see you. I dressed up. You're good. So Commissioner William Moore began his first term on the Lacey Civil Service Commission in December 2007. For those in the audience and for those at home, the Lacey Civil Service Commission is comprised of three members and adopts rules for the regulation of personnel matters and competitive examinations for classified employees of the Lacey Police Department. It also hears appeals arising from the administration of the civil service rules. Bill is an extremely qualified commissioner. He has been a member of the Lacey community for over 25 years. Over the course of his career, he has served in a variety of capacities, including Assistant Professor at Cornell University, affirmative action drug abuse officer, he was a city manager, public affairs officer, personnel manager, special assistant to the Director of the Department of Licensing, manager and administrator for three state agencies, Assistant Director for the Washington State Department of General Administration, and Vice President of Moore &amp; Moore Training and Consultant Services. Bill has also been involved with other organizations such as the Qantas Club and Board of Advisors at the University of Washington. Civil Service Commissioners serve six-year terms with a two-year or two-term limit. Bill concluded his second term of service for the city in December of 2019. I'd just like for everyone to join me in thanking Bill for 12 years of service on the Civil Service Commission.
So, Bill, on behalf of the Lacey City Council and the citizens of Lacey, I just want to thank you for your 12 years of service to the city. And I would like to present you with this Distinguished Public Service Award for those 12 years of service. Thank you so much for all you've done.
As a person of few words, I'd just like to say it's been really a privilege for me to serve our men and women in uniform. And people of Lacey should feel very, very fortunate to have such outstanding professionals serving this community. They do a job, outstanding job, day in and day out, with the chief over there at the helm. So thank you again.
So next up, under recognitions, is a recognition of David Stowe from our Planning Commission. Rick.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like, in the public, I'd like to introduce David Stowe. David Stowe has been a Planning Commissioner for the city of Lacey for, also, since the beginning of 2017. And for the public, the Planning Commission is a nine-member volunteer board appointed by the council. And the Planning Commission is charged to hold public hearings, have outreach, and make recommendations through the city council on a whole host of various types of topic related to land use planning, transportation, anything with the Conference See Plan, as well as development codes and regulations and environmental issues. So there's a lot on their plate, and they do a lot of work, and they meet twice a month, and so that, and all volunteer hours. Some of the topics that Dave weighed in on as his time on, over the last three years on the Planning Commission include, I think the first one was zoning code amendments for drive-through windows. With some of our... That was one of his introductions to the Planning Commission and the work there. But also worked on low-impact development stormwater regulations, the Parks and Recreation Conference See Plan update, stormwater management regulations, audit of our entire municipal code, which is where we went through and reconcile all the various conflicts in the ordinances. Some private requests related to panorama Conference See Plan amendment, regional climate action plan, development guidelines, updates, wireless code updates, which is related to small, related to cell towers, complete streets ordinance. And then in it is terms on the Planning Commission with the Affordable Housing Strategy, talking about the Metropolitan Parks District, emergency housing facilities, and low-density residential consolidation. So a lot of various topics. And I think the Planning Commission gets to weigh in on everything that pretty much the city is involved with. Now, again, I say this is all volunteer hour, so they have to have to meet twice a month. They receive packets that are very, very thick, a lot of document and information from the planning staff. As mentioned, they hold the public hearings and citizen outreach, so they engage with the community. And sometimes there's quite a bit of community interest in some of these topics, so they sort through those comments and concerns. And then ultimately, they work together to develop a recommendation to send on to the council for the benefit and really give that insight for the council to consider those long-term decisions. So I really want to thank Dave for his service on the Planning Commission. He's been a great member, been very active in the Planning Commission. And we'll, yes, want to congratulate him and...
So David, on behalf of the City Council, we know how much work the Planning Commission does for the city of Lacey. They're really doing all the deep dives. They hold all of our public hearings, so they're the ones up here, you know, taking the hard questions and getting screamed and yelled at. And so, you know, on behalf of the council, thank you for all you've done over the past two years. And it's my honor to give you this Distinguished Public Service Award for your time on the Planning Commission. Thank you so much.
That sounds like a lot of work, a lot of topics. I, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have served the city and the citizens of Lacey on the Planning Commission. I will say, I think it's worth noting, I wanted to continue for three more years. I wasn't, I wasn't recommended to continue for three more years. That is what it is. It in no way lessens how much I cherish this moment. And I thank, I thank, first off, first off, the mayor's office, Mayor Rider, for the opportunity. I've always been treated with the utmost professional courtesy from you and anyone in the council that I've come in contact with. I appreciate that. A huge thanks goes out to city staff, in particular Rick Walk, Ryan Andrews, and Jessica Brant. There's an enormous amount of work. Just from hearing all those topics, you could imagine, there's an enormous amount of work that city staff puts in even to just put on one Planning Commission or City Council meeting or work session. It's incredible what they do. I still don't know how it gets done. But I will encourage anyone who ever had any interest in getting involved in government to consider serving on the Planning Commission. I enjoyed every minute of it. And I will say, whether you're speaking as one in government, or you're speaking at government, or you're speaking about government, speak your conscience, speak it respectfully, and speak it often. That's literally the air that democracy breathes. And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next up, our Lacey Loves to Read bookmark winners.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette, and I'm with Lacey Parks and Recreation Department.
I'm Holly Paxton. I'm the manager of the Lacey Timberland Library.
And I'm Karen Johnson, Director for ELA Social Studies Library Programs for North Thurston Public Schools.
And we're here to celebrate 17 years of Lacey Loves to Read. This is a unique program that continues to be a successful literary community partnership between the city of Lacey, the Lacey Timberland Library, the Lacey South Sound Chamber, and North Thurston Public Schools. The mission of the Lacey Loves to Read is to bring community together around the works of one award-winning author. And we couldn't do this program without the support of the many community sponsors and businesses, including Friends of the Lacey Library. businesses, including Friends of the Lacy Library, WSCCU, Silven, Scholastic Books, North Thurston Education Foundation, and many more. Each year, we look for an author, we like to call them our unicorn. In addition to having won a lot of awards, they have written a variety of books which spark interest and encourage reading for all levels. We also try to find an author that has books that explore diversity and compassion. This year's author, Sharon M. Draper, checked all our boxes. Ms. Draper is a professional educator as well as an accomplished writer. She has been honored as a National Teacher of the Year, is a five-time winner of the Coretta Scott King Literary Award, plus numerous other awards, too many to list. And she is a New York Times bestselling author with her book, Out of My Mind, staying on the list well over three years. In 2015, she was honored by the American Library Association as a recipient of the Margaret A. Edward Award for Lifetime Literary Achievement.
Lacy Loves to Read and the Lacy Timberland Library is also proud to sponsor our teen writing and book cover design contest with a goal of giving more kids a chance to participate by sharing their writing and art skills. The winners will have their work preserved, officially published, I believe is the word, in an ebook and be recognized at a special reception with the author during her visit. Each year, we tailor events that reflect the specialties or themes of our authors. This year, the Lacy Library is hosting a teen open-mic night on February 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Olympic Cards and Comics here in Lacy, where students can share their works and poetry among their peers. In an effort to get businesses involved in this community event, the Lacy South Sound Chamber took the lead to coordinate Read Around Lacy. Now in its seventh year, this interactive program involves students in grades K through 5 visiting businesses and reading to them. We have 20 businesses participating this year. When the kids visit the business, the business employee tells them how reading helps them in their own work. Our businesses and their support not only provide funds for the program, but also connect the businesses with the students in a very tangible way. Kids who have a chance to win one of six grand prizes and all who participate receive some fun Read Around Lacy swag. And of course, the highlight of Lacy Loves to Read is when our author visits. Sharon Draper will be in Lacy February 19th and 20th, presenting at school assemblies during the day and as our special guest at the free community event held on Thursday, February 20th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Colville Center at North Thurston High School. This event includes an author presentation, book sales and signings, and free books from the Reading Foundation Book Van. Which brings us to why we're here tonight. Part of the Lacy Loves to Read tradition is to get kids excited about the program and to combine art with literacy. This program is the Lacy Loves to Read Bookmark Contest, sponsored in part by South Bay Press and the North Thurston Education Association, our teachers.
So, as the chairperson for the Lacy Loves to Read Committee, I can tell you that the committee and I, we really had a tough job. We reviewed hundreds of bookmark entries. And I say this every year, but this year, I really mean it. These were the best bookmarks we've ever reviewed. They were just wonderful. And you can really tell the students put a lot of work, a lot of time into their creations, hoping that they will be selected as winners. So, we did choose 24 winners representing every school in the district, as well as private schools and homeschool students. And tonight, we have our grand prize winners with us. So, these winners were the overall winners out of their age category. But before we recognize our grand prize winners, with any event of this magnitude, it's not a one-person job. So, I would truly like to thank the Lacy Loves to Read Committee, especially Jeanette and Holly. They have served on this committee for a number of years, and it would not be such a wonderful city event without these two. So, thank you, Jeanette and Holly. Also, without the work of our school librarians, they really play an important role in pulling this off. They promote our featured author, but they also coordinate the bookmark entries for their schools. So, I don't know if we have any of our teacher librarians here tonight, but if we do, thank you also for your support. So, grand prize winners, this is the fun part. When we call your name, we want you to come up so that we can give you a certificate and we can congratulate you on your job well done. So, I don't want you to sit down after you hear your name, because you're going to have the opportunity to shake the hands of some very important people in our town. So, representing our kindergarten first grade grand prize winner, we have Kevin Nguyen, who is a kindergarten student at Pleasant Glade Elementary School. Kevin, if you can come up. Kevin, this way.
There's not a chance.
She's braver than that was.
Wow.
That's so cute.
Representing second and third grade students, we have Elena Dobson. And she is a second-grade student at South Bay Elementary. Is Elena here tonight? Elena, come on up. And representing, oh, they are important, too. So, representing our students in fourth and fifth grade, grand prize winner is Jennifer Zhang, fifth-grade student at Lakes Elementary. Is Jennifer here?
It is the prettiest dress I've ever seen. She's beautiful.
There we go.
Proud brother.
Representing our sixth through eighth grade students, grand prize winner is Sierra McMillan, eighth-grade student at Camatchan Middle School. And I don't think she is here this evening, but we would like to congratulate her as well. And our ninth through 12th grade grand prize winner is Tommy Smith. He is a 12th grade student at North Thurston High School. And we have our community grand prize winner is Josie Ryder, ninth-grade student at Northwest Krishton High School.
It's my daughter.
I think you're even better at training.
All come up.
Good job, bud.
What about boots?
Can I possibly?
You need your feet?
You can grab on to me if you...
Good job.
I got it.
I was thinking I'd better say that.
Yeah, I didn't even realize till right now.
And we just really want everyone to know, we are a very ethical committee.
We had no idea we selected the mayor's daughter until right now. We did not make the connections with the name, so...
All your heart is yours.
On your merits.
It's really cute. She came home, she goes, "What did you do, daddy?" And I'm like, "I didn't do anything, I swear."
Well, plus, it was the first time since I've been on council that anybody from council...
Well, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So, next on our agenda is a public comment on items not on the agenda. And we do have a couple people who signed up. First off, it's John. You know, you know the rules here.
I know the rules.
Give it about three minutes.
Pretty good on this.
I'm going to start by a particular saying I live by very strongly, which is actions speak louder than words. And I had great appreciation for some of your compassionate words you had here, because, you know, it takes a lot to reach out and help people, especially those that are less advantaged. And my first point in my conversation tonight is going to be about, you know, the people who are less privileged, okay? And I have appreciation for a topic called affordable housing. It seems to be a buzzword politically, and everyone wants to say, "I support the concept of keeping affordable housing affordable." But then again, actions speak louder than words. And when I'm all done, I'm going to ask for a piece of action in the future. So, I'll let you know that in advance. I took note, because I have a topic which I've been, I'm battling a little bit, and some people know about it. I battled with the county about many different things. But one of the things which I took note of is that there's an initiative coming up or a proposal for a tax increase. And so, I don't want to see that go into effect and hurt people. You took note today of the fact that North Thurston School District, you have about 45% of the students there are in the low-income category. So, certainly don't want to take anything more away from their families. I think that's easy, real clear. I noticed that from, and I didn't really know, I did my research a little bit, the city of Lacy has an affordable housing strategy. And that means, I presume, your actions will act in accordance to that strategy. And I really thought, you know, it showed the rents being like $1,000 for a one-bedroom, $1,475 for a two-bedroom. Okay, I've got a couple of copies here. And I appreciated your policy. It says, "Policy one, help people stay in affordable housing." And it noted down here that for a long time, but no longer can afford to live there because the increased cost, maintenance, taxes, and utilities. So, everything that happens to these people affects them. And that's where I'm going to come in and talk about another little topic, because there's a proposal that's going to hit for a 25-year period, is if it was to be enacted. It's to build something that's going to cost everyone, everybody, more money. And the one that's going to hurt the most is going to be tax people, the people that are renters. So, if you want to raise the rents on everybody to pay for a tax, you can do it.
John, I got to be careful here. We cannot use this as a for or against any initiative.
Well, and all I guess is I'm saying is, you're going to have to decide, because I understand people are seeking you to make a representation such as you did with 976 to support a building of a facility. I'm going to ask all of you to consider deeply whether you want to impose more cost. Somebody $100 more a month in rent, because landlords raise their rents whenever they have to pay more taxes. Okay? So, I think it's your duty to protect the people of the community, help keep affordable housing in an appropriate level. Don't do anything to encourage more cost.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have Janice. Maybe not. Is it Janice V. Flores? Seeing none? Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on the items not on the agenda?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to first congratulate Lacy for their great efforts on maintaining a safe city. I am part of my own little thing I made up 10 seconds ago known as the Homeless Vigilante Initiative. I like to patrol our city to make sure that RVs and the people that want to break the law and destroy a beautiful city are not here, you know, bothering our great citizens. And with the law enforcement and the actions from the councils, I've seen a mass improvement. And I just wanted to say thank you, as well as the council guiding me to the work source for, you know, great, you know, work sessions, workshops, and ways to get myself into a better track. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please.
Hello, Holly Paxton, manager of the Lacy Timberland Library. I just wanted to take a brief moment to let everyone know, or remind you, if you already knew about it, that the library will be closed next week, Monday, for our Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, and on the 23rd and 24th next week, so that we can install new computer table furniture and new shelving. It's a very short closure, so we can get some work done in there and make the library continue to be very functional and usable for all of you. And we will be back open again on the 25th. So, I do apologize that next week is kind of a light week for library services, but we will be back and ready to go for you at 10 o'clock on Saturday, the 25th.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council?
But you'll gain a day for leap year, right?
That's true. Seeing none?
I just have a question. I'm just curious about what the rules are as far as comment on...
Can you, yeah, can you please explain why I was cautioning?
It's a public disclosure, or public, I forget the statute number off the top of my head. But basically, the council is not authorized to allow its facilities to be used to support or oppose any initiative or any public campaign of the sort. And so, I think...
Facilities paid for by tax dollars, right?
Correct. Correct.
The only time we're ever allowed to discuss anything is under that small exemption that allows us to, as a body, take a position for or against. That's the only time the public can speak during...
So, it's only during that public hearing that we do for those resolutions?
I just wanted to take a brief moment to let everyone know, or remind you if you already knew about it, that the library will be closed next week, Monday, for our Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, and on the 23rd and 24th next week, so that we can install new computer table furniture and new shelving. It's a very short closure, so we can get some work done in there and make the library continue to be very functional and usable for all of you. And we will be back open again on the 25th. So I do apologize that next week is kind of a light week for library services, but we will be back and ready to go for you at 10 o'clock on Saturday, the 25th.
Wait. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council?
But you'll gain a day for leap year, right?
That's true. Seeing none?
I just have a question. I'm just curious about what the rules are, as far as comment on...
Can you, yeah, can you please explain why I was cautioning?
It's a public disclosure, or public, I forget the statute number off the top of my head, but basically, the council is not authorized to allow its facilities to be used to support or oppose any initiative or any public campaign of the sort. And so I think...
Facilities paid for by tax dollars, right?
Correct.
Yeah. The only time we're ever allowed to discuss anything is under that small exemption that allows us to, as a body, take a position for or against. That's the only time the public can speak during...
So it's only during that public hearing that we do for those resolutions?
Oh, it's at any time. Yes, it's only during a hearing specifically, if the council's considering an action such as a resolution, then comments can be allowed either for or against. And I think here, the mayor's comments were appropriate. I didn't hear anything specific enough to be a problem, to be a violation, and nor did Mr. Pettit, I think, put this council in a position. But I think it's just an appropriate remark.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, next up on the agenda is proclamations. And our first proclamation is Lacey Loves to Read. Councilmember?
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas literacy is a top school and community concern, and is integral to success in school, business, and daily living, and...
Whereas providing opportunities for citizens of all ages to discuss the cultural and literary merits of common reading will help create a culture of 20 minutes a day, family, literacy, and civic pride in Lacey, and...
Whereas a community-wide reading program such as Lacey Loves to Read Month will support both students and community members in understanding the power of writing and literacy in their lives, and...
Whereas a partnership between North Thurston Public Schools, the city of Lacey, and the Lacey Timberland Regional Library has made this program possible, and...
Whereas reading literature that explores diversity, global, and social issues can help increase tolerance and unity within a community, and...
Whereas Lacey citizens can read and discuss a variety of works by award-winning author Sharon M. Draper, who will visit our community February 19 through 2020.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim February 2020 as Lacey Loves to Read Month in the city of Lacey. I encourage citizens of all ages to acknowledge and celebrate the importance of reading and to discuss the works by author Sharon M. Draper. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, January 16, 2020.
Thank you.
I really don't have anything else to say. We covered it all, but we appreciate the council's support for this program. And have Holly come up, we'll come down and shake your hands. But, great program, we know reading is important, and we appreciate your support.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so pleased we have this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you too.
Thank you.
So our next proclamation?
Yes, indeed. City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas access to safe, affordable housing is critical for our lowest-income citizens, including seniors, those with disabilities, and families, and...
Whereas in Washington State, only 29 low-income housing units are available for every 100 low-income households, reflecting the staggering need for more affordable housing, and...
Whereas numerous studies demonstrate the positive mental and physical impact stable and safe housing has on children and adults alike, and...
Whereas Homes First is long-established provider of safe, healthy, and affordable housing in our community, and...
Whereas Homes First has housed over 5,000 people in Lacey and Thurston County in sites throughout our neighborhoods, helping tenants connect with the community in positive ways, and...
Whereas Homes First continues to create innovative partnerships to best build community and increase affordable, supportive housing options.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize the 30th anniversary of Homes First. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, January 16, 2020.
Thank you very much. I do, I always want to say a few words. Big surprise. We are really honored that you have taken the time to recognize the work that Homes First has been doing in our community, Thurston County-wide, but 20 of our properties, of our 46 properties, are in the city of Lacey. So I just want you to know that we have a big commitment to the city of Lacey, and we want to keep helping solve the problems that we're having around homelessness and people struggling to pay what it costs for a home and utilities and all the other things, you know? Hearing the first compassionate community presentation today, it's heartbreaking to hear that the way people get to have a decent Christmas is they have to be put up in a hotel room, right? That's not what we want for our community, that's not what we want for our citizens. And we are really grateful that the city of Lacey chooses to partner with us, because it takes partnerships to make this happen. And we really appreciate your support here in the council and all throughout the community to try to address the problems that we're having right now around housing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we have a picture with all of you to add to our collection? Yes, is that okay? So, two of my board members are here tonight, Mary Roberts and Thomasina Cooper. Everybody couldn't be here, but I brought a few. And somebody willing to take our picture?
I'll take it.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, tell people in fact, sorry, that's not you, honey. We got a...
Everybody will do a laugh. Ready?
Thank you very much.
That's very... Is it in your office in Lacey too?
In our office in Lacey?
Plus one?
That's right. Thank you. And it's all your lawn. We have a birthday party later, we'll fight ball.
Thank you. I'm so proud of all the great work that Homes First does, and of course, that they're located right here in Lacey, and we've been able to partner with them, and we had a couple homes that weren't being used, because they were homes that were, that we were going to need to take out for utility stuff that we partnered. And so there's been the great, log great partnerships, and we look forward to even more in the future. So thank you for all you do. So, next up is a referral from our planning commission. So now we get to the real work. Amendment to develop guidelines and public work standards for annexation. Some of David's work. Jessica.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council. This agenda item is related to annexation requirements in our development guidelines and public work standards. And I have two recommendations for you this evening. The first one is to adopt a resolution to modify Resolution 1066 regarding extension of the city's utility system. And the second recommendation that goes with it is to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 3.135 of the City of Lacey Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards regarding exceptions to annexation requirements. Let's look at what the existing requirements are first. I'll go through this piece by piece, there's a lot of text up there. So currently, owners of properties lying outside of but contiguous to city boundaries shall be annexed to the city prior to being served by city-owned utility. Owners of properties lying outside of but not contiguous must legally commit their property to eventual annexation prior to being served by the city's utility system. If an existing residence or business experiences a septic or water failure, connection to city utilities would not require annexation proceedings if a power-of-attorney agreement were executed legally committing their property to eventual annexation. These requirements will be applied to all extensions of the city's utilities outside city limits. Anyone who desires to extend the city's utility system should contact Department of Public Works for specific requirements. That is current. What we're proposing are two more exceptions to what we currently have. So we rewrote what we had in that existing policy, we just rewrote it to make it a little bit easier to read. So the two new exceptions are there and read. So we'll continue to have exceptions for things that address imminent health or safety considerations, like a failing septic system. And if you're not contiguous to city limits, we will also not require annexation, but just a power-of-attorney agreement. The two new exceptions we're adding is connections through a city-initiated capital project, or connections to existing residential uses, provided that any redevelopment or new development shall require annexation in the future. And let's talk about those two exceptions and why we're proposing them. For the first part, the capital estates, that was really a city-initiated project due to just water quality standards for our drinking water. And we're really just trying to convert that neighborhood to protect drinking water for our well, and it really doesn't benefit the city anyway. Power-of-attorney agreements were signed for pretty much every property owner in that neighborhood. And the second exception for developed residential lots is just simply, it's just not really beneficial to the city in any way for a single residential lot to go through the annexation process. And there's just a variety of scenarios that kind of create the situation where a property owner would want to convert to the sewer system, like through maybe an FHA loan, or they just, for environmental reasons, feel like they just don't want to be on septic anymore. But if, you know, our annexation process takes a few months, and we just don't want to hold them up, and there's also just no real benefit to us annexing one single piece of property. So we just require the power-of-attorney agreement. So at some point in the future, if it makes sense, we can then go through that process. So really, at the end of the day, this is almost a housekeeping amendment, because we're just implementing something that we've already been doing, kind of a policy standpoint. So with that, I just recommend that you adopt the resolution to modify Resolution 1066 regarding extension to our utility system, and adopt an ordinance to amend Section 3.135 regarding exceptions.
They have to be separate.
Excuse me?
They don't, they don't have, they could be one motion.
I'd recommend just doing two separate motions. I would move to adopt Resolution to modify Resolution 1066 regarding extension of the city's utility system.
I second that.
It's been moved in second, discussion, so...
Yeah, I have a question. So in the case of an individual property owner that's close to the city limits, but still considered county or urban growth area, and they're on a septic, let's say that they have some mediating issues with the septic and their preferences to just fix the existing septic versus connect to the city utility. Is there anything in this new change that would keep them from doing so? Is there going to be any problems with that, or...
They can replace their septic system. This is really focused on those who really are seeking city utilities.
So I guess, what about, what about the Board of Health? Are they going to direct them to connect to the city sewer if it's available, instead of getting a permit to fix their existing septic?
So, there's another standard in the development guidelines that says if you're within 200 feet of the sewer, if your, if your septic fails, you're required to connect, which is different from, from this.
So, so these are all separate issues? We could go on all day about the other 200-foot requirement?
Correct. Yeah, that's a separate policy.
So, I only see one sort of concern in all of this, and, and it kind of goes to both these issues. And it's receiving these power-of attorneys from lots, and having no timeline to review those if they should come in this city or not. What I would like to see is at least a yearly review, or something of how many power-of-attorneys that we have, of outstanding lots, and, and pros and cons to either annexing them or not annexing them. But if, if we don't set up specific, a specific timeline, then we'll be collecting power-of-attorneys for 20 years, and realize like, oh geez, we have a lot of property that should have been annexed, and we didn't do it, because there's no timeline set to do it. And so... Right? It does. So, so, can we ask for a, what, a yearly review of, and, and put it into the policy?
So I believe Resolution 1066 will reference that, and the paragraph says, "Director of Public Works shall pond execution of said legal documents, will provide a report to City Council," and we could institute an annual review of that.
And I wouldn't suggest putting it in this ordinance amendment, because this ordinance amendment is specific to those regulations within the guidelines, but that is something we can do by policy.
By policy.
If I could add, at the council retreat a number of years ago, the council, you know, I mean, with the help of community development, designated somewhat a priority order in which annexations would be approached in order for efficiency. And, you know, I think in following that direction, you will, you know, obtain the benefits you're looking for, the gains that you're looking for.
I, I agree. I just would like some sort of review system, so we know how many parcels do we have that we have power of attorney, and then at least we can have a conversation on the council on to move forward or not, based on our own policies and everything else. That's something we could do, just by policy?
Yes, we can do that, through our, through a review process, and check back in through either the council committee process, or a work session, council work session, or even a retreat topic.
Great, thank you. Deputy mayor?
So, I realize this is for a property that they probably want to be on sewer, but it takes time. But, and I realize it's what-if, what-if, I tend to do that, but, so what if they end up not doing that right at the moment, but then end up for whatever, and sell their house, and then we have a property that does not want, a property owner that does not want to do that, and then we end up in kind of a donut hole again?
It goes on the title.
Yeah, the, the power of attorney is going to be binding on successive property owners.
Okay, okay, good.
So they'll be binding them, they'll be binding the property, it's going to run with the land.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Well, I mean, yeah, you know, we have the 10% assessed evaluation and the 60% petition method too, it's a, so maybe that could be a good guideline, perhaps, just thinking out loud.
Okay, any other discussion?
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, it's, it's been moved in second to adopt this Resolution to modify Resolution 1066 regarding extension of the city utility systems, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And next up is a, can I get a motion to adopt ordinance to amend Section 3.135?
I move to adopt ordinance to amend Section 3.135 of the city of Lacey's Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards regarding exceptions to annexation requirements.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion along these lines? Seeing none? All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And next up is a referral from our hearing examiner for the conditional use and wetland development permit for Lakeview Meadows North. And I hope everyone read this entire packet.
I've read some of it. Even though I was sick.
And this, and this was the conversation we've had, do we really want to be going through this every time?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. I just want to ask, before we get started, I know, if everybody saw, I just learned tonight that there was an issue with the actual recommendation getting onto the website. I don't know, hopefully you've seen the actual hearings examiner recommendation, as you have. Okay, that's great.
I got it.
Okay. Good, good. So tonight, I'm going to present that recommendation on the Lakeview Meadows North manufactured home park and conditional use and wetland development permit applications. So this request is for approval to construct a 24-unit manufactured home community for adults age 62 or above. The project would actually be an expansion of the existing Lakeview Meadows manufactured home community, and that project was approved in December of 2003 through the conditional use permit process as well. That project is located here, and it was approved for 65 individual manufactured home units and a 24-unit apartment complex, or apartment building that was supposed to go here. So what this current project requests is to eliminate that apartment building from the original Lakeview Meadows project, and replace it instead with 24 manufactured home sites, an RV parking area, and additional open space. The area for this project includes the 1.3 acres that was intended for the apartment complex, as well as this 4.33 acre parcel to the north. The total density for the project as a whole will be approximately four units per acre. So as you can see, this property is located just north of 37th Avenue, southeast. Adjacent uses include single-family residential to both the north and to the east, and Chambers Lake, and an open space and wetland to the west. The property is zoned moderate-density residential, and in the moderate-density residential zone, there's actually no minimum density required for manufactured home communities. For regular single-family or multifamily development, it's eight to 16 units per acre. But there is no minimum required with manufactured homes. And they are manufactured home communities permitted in all residential zones, subject to review and approval of a conditional use permit. And we require a conditional use permit for this type of development, because it's very similar in character to a residential subdivision, which is subject to a higher level of review through the quasi- The total density for the project as a whole will be approximately four units per acre. So as you can see, this property is located just north of 37th Avenue southeast. Adjacent uses include single-family residential to both the north and to the east, and Chambers Lake, and an open space and wetland to the west. The property is zoned moderate-density residential, and in the moderate-density residential zone, there's actually no minimum density required for manufactured home communities. For regular single-family or multifamily development, it's eight to 16 units per acre, but there is no minimum required with manufactured homes. And they are manufactured home communities permitted in all residential zones, subject to review and approval of a conditional use permit. And we require a conditional use permit for this type of development because it's very similar in character to a residential subdivision, which is subject to a higher level of review through the quasi-judicial process. And so that's why we're here tonight. And what that does is ensure, attempts to ensure that potential impacts and compatibility issues are addressed through this higher level of review process. This project also requires a wetland development permit for proposed impacts to the wetland buffer associated with a Category 2 wetland adjacent to the property. The buffer is a 220-foot buffer, and it encumbers a portion of this, the Lakeview Meadows property. I'll go ahead and pull up the site plan for you. Here is the wetland and the boundary and the project site. The applicant has requested that the buffer be reduced to 165 feet in limited locations at the project site, and also proposes to implement a comprehensive buffer restoration and enhancement plan. They would also be increasing the wetland buffer width in some locations as well to beyond 220 feet, which is the minimum required for a high-intensity land use. So with the mitigation enhancement proposed, this project would actually convert an existing buffer that currently consists mainly of pasture land, some orchard trees, and mostly invasive species, reed canary grass, Himalayan blackberry, and scotch broom, into a buffer that would be more effective at improving water quality, wetland health, and species and habitat diversity with the proposal. The hearings examiner held a public hearing on December 3rd. Several members of the surrounding community attended the hearing and provided testimony along with staff and the applicant. Topics of discussion included neighborhood compatibility, particularly as it relates to the RV parking area, which is located here. There are existing residential uses immediately to the north and residentially zoned property also to the east. So there's some general concern about that compatibility of that use immediately adjacent to existing residential. And then there were also concerns voiced regarding generally transportation, just in general in the surrounding area, not necessarily specific to this use, but general impacts from projects that have taken place recently. Stormwater management was discussed, as well as wetland buffer and critical area impacts. The hearings examiner recommended approval of the project with conditions substantially as recommended by city staff. He did include two additional conditions related to impacts that were addressed in testimony. Condition number 87 specifically requires that the applicant investigate relocating the RV parking area to Pad K, which is located south. That would, if they did that, they could move this home site up to this area here, but it would remove that impact of the RV parking immediately adjacent to those existing single-family residences. Yes?
You said it requires them to investigate moving it.
Yes, that's what the condition says, yes. Correct. That's the suggested condition. And then condition number 88 requires that permanent wetland buffer fencing be extended beyond the project boundary to encompass the entire wetland buffer of the, associated wetland with the entire Lakeview Meadows project. When Lakeview Meadows originally was approved back in 2003, there wasn't a requirement to do a permanent wetland buffer fence, and with the impacts proposed with this project, the hearings examiner has recommended that the entire wetland be, the buffer be protected with a permanent well and protection fencing. So with those changes, staff is requesting council approve the recommendation, and his recommendation dated December 18th of 2019.
Can I get a motion?
Might take me a minute to get there.
I would, yeah, I would move that we approve Project 19-3, conditional use permit and associated, associated wetland development permit for Lakeview Meadows North.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Deputy Mayor?
So there's been, some of the comment letters, at least the one prior to the hearing, was concerned about potential flooding to his property. Has that been addressed? And then second, so that's one question. And then the other is the, one of the ones brought up the thing about how to make sure that the foliage doesn't get, you know, they're requiring trees and keeping some of the trees, which, boy, that's great, but his question was, there's no guarantee the property owners would not cut it down, and what do we do then? And so that's one, two, and then I guess, will, is there a concern to having contamination, because of stormwater contamination into the, is it Chambers?
The wetlands.
The wetlands area? So that, could you address that?
Sure, your first one was the, I'm sorry, what was the first?
Well, one is he was worried that his property was going, well, first, the property was too close, and, and they wanted to remove Q and, Q and R, I think. And, and so he was really concerned that it was way too close. And then also, his property could get flooded.
So stormwater has to be, stormwater associated with this project has to be taken care of on this project, and so the stormwater system that is constructed with it would theoretically take care of any potential for flooding of adjacent properties. That's what their stormwater system is supposed to do. The same, I'll answer, or try to answer, the pollutants. The roads and the individual units will be, the stormwater associated with those will be directed towards their stormwater system and then treated and infiltrated on-site to eliminate the, the potential for flooding of Chambers Lake. And also, the wetland and the large wetland buffer also helps, provides another avenue to help treat any runoff or stormwater-related issues related to Chambers Lake. And in terms of adjacency to the neighbors, there is a, there is a buffer proposed, and they're required to do at least a minimum of an eight-foot buffer as well as a fence on that north property line. But beyond that, it is zoned for residential use, and residential, really to residential, in a lot of cases, doesn't even require a setback, aside from their yard setbacks. So they have proposed a vegetated buffer on that north property line before the individual units are actually constructed. So there will be that eight-foot buffer, a fence, or a fence, an eight-foot buffer, and then whatever yard setback there is, that will provide some distance for those uses, or for those existing residences.
Okay. I have one more, but go ahead.
So because it's wetlands and not the lake, per se, they're not, right, they're not lake parcels, like shore.
So the shoreline zone in this is shoreline residential, and this project takes place entirely outside of the 200-foot shoreline zone. So it is entirely outside of that. We did include a condition in the recommendation, because there is some potential in doing the wetland enhancement, that they might get into that shoreline zone, that that, that the shoreline edge be marked, the shoreline urban conservancy designation be marked, and if they have any need to go into that, then they'd require permits in order to, to accomplish that work in that area.
Could you walk us through the buffer averaging that's discussed on page seven here? I've got a little lost in the 165 and 220, and how all that works out.
Sure, so the application originally came in with a request for buffer averaging, but there wasn't quite enough area to actually buffer average. What our averaging requirements say is you can average in certain areas as long as the total width of the buffer or total area of the buffer isn't decreased. They don't have quite the area, total area, in order to buffer average on this parcel. So what they've done is requested instead of buffer averaging, a buffer width reduction to 165 feet. And the buffer width reduction of 165 feet is an allowable buffer for low-intensity land uses. Typically, urban residential development isn't considered a low-intensity land use, but in this case, we have very low unit per acre, about four units per acre in this area. It's senior living community, fairly large units, and it seemed that buffer reduction, along with the enhancement provisions that were going to be applied, would be appropriate in this location. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. First up, I, on the request to, to look at changing the RV parking, what kind of process will that be, and, and how do you figure out if it's feasible or not?
That's a good question. You know, I would probably go into it expecting that they could move it.
Okay, because obviously, it sounds like a lot of the concerns from the neighbors to the north is around that, and it'd be nice if that could be alleviated. The other thing is, is I couldn't really tell, are there, are there sidewalks through this development?
So it's like a, an apartment community. They don't have sidewalks because there's no public streets. So they walk along, there's a pathway on, in Lakeview Meadows, there's a pathway on this side, and then on the public street, which is Meadow Brook Lane, or not Meadow Brook Lane, to the south is the public street. There are sidewalks here, but otherwise, no, there are no sidewalks in this location.
And that, my other question is, is access, is this just one road in, one road out?
It is.
Does that meet our connectivity that we, you know, we try to do between neighborhoods within our, it, it shows like a future road?
Yeah, a potential future stub here.
What, what will trigger that future road?
Development of the adjacent parcel.
I just couldn't tell, I thought the, the adjacent parcel was developed, no?
It would be, so they're showing it right, like up in this location.
Oh, okay. So if that parcel just to the?
Yes, to the east.
To the east there, gets developed, they'll have to stub a rub through.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
Yes.
Okay.
Did they give reasons for why they would remove the 20, I'm, I'm sure they're trying to market and, and sell the lots before they even build, but did they give reasons why you would take out the 24-unit apartment complex and replace it with six single-family?
They didn't, they didn't. It's, they, their product is manufactured homes, so I think they're developing to their product.
And, and this is, this is a great project, because, I mean, 10,000 people every day, 55 are over, and it's been happening for, you know, seven or eight years, and it's going to continue for another seven or eight years, so this is a great project.
I'm just curious, so with the stipulation that they have to investigate that other area for, is there any follow-up to that? Is there any, will we be going out to make, I mean, investigate? I'm just not sure what that means exactly. I mean, they could just say, yeah, we decide, we investigated and decided this is a better spot. I mean, is there anything behind that? I'm just not quite understanding that part.
Do you want to?
You want me to?
If you want to.
With the recommended condition, it says that we will have them show why they should or shouldn't have the, that, the RV storage in either location, but there isn't anything that says that it, we, they shall relocate it.
Right, so they will have to at least show, they'll actually have to show that they did investigate it and show what they found.
Right.
Okay, that's all I was looking for.
But still, it's up to their discretion where that goes, because it says, but there's also the ability for them to modify that, too, if the council so wished, if that was an issue for the council, because it's all part of the record, and you can modify that particular condition if the council deemed it was worthy to do so.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So the very last page talked about RVs and diesel fumes and whatever, and it's not really quite part of the, I don't think the record, I mean, other than it's in the record, but do people spend every day fueling, I mean, pumping up their RV? I'm, I'm just curious.
So this is an RV parking area. There may have been some confusion about whether or not it was a parking area or an RV park, which are two different, obviously two different things. So this is a parking area, and there will be CCNRs that would, would not permit somebody either to live in there or to do maintenance, it would just be a parking area.
Oh, wow. I thought this was going to have RV hookups there.
No, it's a, it's storage, it's RV storage, yes.
For, they'll be in the house and then?
Yes, it's just for the residents.
So if they snowboarded, uh, snowboarded to Arizona, they'd get in there.
Exactly, so at, at some of Detray's other locations, they actually have these, and the residents of Lakeview Meadows have been requesting a place to store their RVs that are, that are closer to home.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I thought so, too. I thought that was me, RV hookups there. And that's why, you could see why they'd be upset.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, and, and people don't need to charge up their RV when they're not using it.
No.
Okay, excellent. That's the only thing I had.
Is there any other discussion?
Is it, is it, the RV parking, is it designed for, like, is there enough for each one of these units, or is it just enough for five or 10?
Um, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how many.
And then, is this whole thing gated, or is this?
It's not, it's not.
Okay, is there any other questions? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to approve Project 19-3 with a conditional use permit and associated wetland development permit for Lakeview Meadows North. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So next up is the mayor's report, and first up on my report is to recommend the reappointment of James Murray to the library board. I don't see James.
Second.
So I moved, and there's a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none?
He's going to get two days off here, isn't he?
Yeah, seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion to reappoint James Murray to the library board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, he's been reappointed. And then, next up is council assignments to intergovernmental boards and commissions. So I think, hopefully, everyone got a chance to see the recommendations. Now's your time to speak up if there's any major conflicts within, within this. I, I didn't make hardly any changes from, from years past.
Let me put a motion on the table, let me discuss from there. I would move that we approve the council assignments, intergovernmental boards and commissions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Now we're on to discussion. Is there any, any discussion, council mayor?
No, I would just say thank you. I think you did a good job of giving, you know, giving people what they asked for as best as possible.
I do think we, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do think that we need to make sure that times and dates are correct so that all of a sudden we say, don't have to say ups or something.
Yeah, and just, just a reminder for, for the city's boards, or council committee assignments, at that first meeting, and your first meeting is in February, because remember, this will take place February, on February 1. You guys, the, the committee at the time is, will be picking a chair. You guys can discuss at that time about meeting time, place, you know, or day, all that stuff, you can decide.
Little misleading, is it listed the chair for several of them?
Yeah, so prob, sorry.
Probably shouldn't, because it would be chosen ethically, there really is no chair going into the board.
Yeah, so, so all I did was cheat, because I took off last year's and, and just plugged in names, so, but you're right, the, the chairs has not been assigned yet for any of the council committees, so.
Well, I would make it work according to my schedule, no matter if, if it moves forward the way it is, but I am a board member on the chamber, so especially if there's another business owner or some, another council person on this, on our council that would like to sit.
For the South Sound Chamber.
That would be me.
So.
And then, having said that, it's, the SWAC meeting runs right into the beginning of the chamber meeting, which I should.
So I was, I was almost going to just give it to council member, and then discuss, and then discussion, because I knew that you had that problem, but, you know, if you guys are willing, if you're willing to be the lead on Lacy Chamber?
I would be honored to be the lead on Lacy Chamber.
Okay, then, then, and then we'll just, we'll just switch it where you'll be his backup, if you can't make it for some reason, you're already going to be there. That's easy enough.
You need an amendment to the motion, though?
Nah, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, you don't.
Well, is there any other?
Well, I was just going to say, so, opposite of the mayor's recommending the slate of positions for their government boards, I would just, in the motion, and I would just maybe recognize that one amendment to that.
Okay. Okay, let's.
So approve the recommendation by council with the one change.
Yeah, okay, let's go through, is there anything else, if you see in here, that's tough? I know that that was really tough, and I know council member Cox really wanted to be on TRPC, but I, that was the tough thing for me, is I had to figure out how to make this fair, and so I think council member Miller will be a great fit there, and I know we had a conversation. And I know we had a conversation, I just want to make sure you are comfortable with, with being the lead and everything. Okay?
I'm in. I thought you had, did a fair job.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I thought it was good.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So it's, we have one amendment to this where?
Oh yeah, I'll just amend my motion. So, I move to approve the, the council, the recommendation for council committee assignments with the one change on South Sound Chamber.
And, and then who was the second on that?
Second.
Who's the second?
I'll be second.
Okay.
I'll second second.
Is there any further discussion?
Close enough.
Close enough, we got, we got the gist of it. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of amend, of, of the motion to approve the amended intergovernmental boards and commission assignments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And we're done, thank you. And we'll update that list and make sure that everyone has their assignments. And next up is the city manager's report.
So, I'm the mayor and city council, we have two items before you. The first is the Astound broadband telecommunications franchise renewal. Steve Kirkman will provide that update.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you this evening is a proposal for the city manager to approve a renewal of a five-year telecommunications franchise with Astound Broadband LLC. In 2015, the city entered into a five-year franchise with Astound, and it's going to expire on the 2nd of next month. Astound's use of the public right of way with their franchise that would be regulated by the Thurston, or, sorry, the Lacy Municipal Code Chapter 5.6, which permits reasonable and fair access to the right of way for telecommunications purposes. The renewal will require Astound to comply with all regulations in 5.6. And in addition, they'll have to pay a franchise renewal fee, which they have done, and apply, or abide by all rules that be used for businesses on fees and that type of thing and licenses. And the utilities committee reviewed this at their recent meeting and have recommended the council consider and approve. And I think I'll pause there.
Can I get a motion?
Move to authorize the city manager to sign the proposed agreement, providing a five-year renewal of telecommunications franchise with Astound Broadband LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is the corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy. Jen?
Okay, thank you, good evening, mayor Ryder and members of the council. Before you tonight is a corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy for the Parks and Recreation Department. And also the naming of public parks and historical buildings policies intended for the city council policy manual. There are three attachments that we'll be talking through. But before we get into the policy, I thought I could show a couple of slides and explain a little bit about the program. So if you'll recall, in 2018, we did, we had the sponsorship insights and recommendations report overview done. In 2019, per council's direction, staff has worked closely with the park board and also with the sponsorship consultant. From that report, we are reminded that parks and recreation departments are uniquely positioned to provide companies an affordable sponsorship opportunity that aligns with sports and wellness, connects with families, and reinforces community support. As you know, there's a challenge in the Parks and Recreation Department, and that is securing funding. The comprehensive plan identifies seeking sources of revenue and leveraging investments. The report also indicates that launching a new sponsorship initiative would require a cultural shift toward a unified collaborative approach to sponsorship and be embraced as a citywide initiative. So to look at the different levels of partnerships that were recommended, there are a few different, different levels. So the park partner is on the far left, and that would typically be a three-year contract. One of the goals of this program is to enter into multi-year contracts for staff efficiencies and better opportunities. So the park partners come in right around the $30,000 mark per year. And what those are is, it's a partnership across multiple programs and facilities. There's some level of exclusivity, and there's definitely specific marketing benefits that go along with that one. That's our highest, well, I guess, that one and the naming rights are the highest dollar value of a sponsorship that would be sold. But the park partner is unique because there would only be four to five of those allowed at a time. And those park partners would really be at a higher level than the others, the other sponsorships in that they would be in, like, the quarterly brochure that goes out. They would be mentioned in, and thanked in any type of a presentation. So they would travel with, you know, myself or our staff as we go around to do different presentations. And they would be present at a lot more of our events and programs. So that's the park partner. And then moving over to the right, the naming rights, those are coming in valued between $40,000 and $50,000 a year. The RAC specifically has been identified as $50,000. And that is a 10-plus year contract, and it's specific to a building or a facility. So it's very different than the park partner program. It's definitely exclusivity-driven, and there would be inclusion on marketing related to that particular building or facility. And then the next one over is called a title sponsor, and those can range from $10,000 to $15,000 per year. And those are three-year contracts. Those are event-specific, or they could be program-specific. There is exclusivity, there's onsite recognition, signage, marketing materials, and promotion, mostly around that event or program. And then if you move over to the right, the presenting sponsors come in between $5,000 and $10,000 per year. And those are also event-specific, and they are offered onsite signage and also other marketing opportunities. There's also a participating sponsor, and those are smaller levels, and those, you could think of those as more like organizations or businesses that have booths at, at one of our events. And the next slide, I'll give you a little bit better examples. So as we move into the policy discussion, you can kind of, you know, consider what it actually looks like. So park partnership, like I said before, is a year-round, all-inclusive partnership, and they would be limited. The naming rights, for example, the regional athletic complex, or it could be the fields at Rainier Vista. Could also be the entire park of Rainier Vista, offered as an opportunity. You could also think of the pickleball courts at Rainier Vista Park as its own facility that, that could be named. The title sponsors, the way those work, just to use Twin Star Credit Union, because they've been a sponsor of ours in the past, as an example. It would be, if they were a title sponsor of an event, it would be the Twin Star Credit Union Fireworks Spectacular, just to give you an example. Title sponsors are typically for the larger events, like Lacy and Toon Series, or the Lacy Spring Fun Fair, 3rd of July, obviously. Presenting sponsor would go like this, Lacy's Cultural Celebration presented by Molina Healthcare. So it's a lower, kind of a lower level. You could have a title and a presenting, but not always, kind of have to go through and do what makes sense. You could also have no title sponsor and two presenting sponsors. So, there's different ways that that can work. But the presenting sponsors would be kind of the smaller events or programs, like cultural celebration, the movie nights, STEM Fair, Children's Day, et cetera. So hopefully that helps give, give an idea of what that looks like. So let's move on to the attachments. The first one is the current corporate sponsorship policy. That's the first attachment. Second one is the recommended update. And right off the bat, you'll see it's the corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy. So naming rights has been added to that policy title. Staff have done a lot of work on this one, also including our legal department. The consultant made recommendations to this policy, and the park board is now recommending it to city council. The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines in the development and management of sponsorship and naming right programs. The policy will provide guidance for entering into agreements with businesses in exchange for providing financial or material in-kind support for a specified park asset or park program. I wanted to point out that sponsorship is different than a donation or a partnership with a group. It's a business transaction and a business agreement. So if we move down on page one, the policy statement is better described than the old, than the current policy. If you switch over to page two, you'll see that the definitions have been expanded. You'll see further down the page, examples of types of sponsorships, those are the ones I talked about. We thought it important to add, to put those in here, but make sure we say not limited to, because those different types could change. And then we wouldn't have to make a policy change if that, if that happened. We did add in non-public forum status right underneath the examples there. If you go to page three, there's eligibility criteria. There's a lot of sections added here to give very clear direction on what would be accepted and what would not. I want to read the second paragraph. It says, corporate sponsors must support the mission and policies for the city of Lacy and Lacy Parks and Recreation. In general, the following industries are not eligible for corporate sponsorship with Lacy Parks and Rec. Religious, gambling, alcohol, cannabis, tobacco, firearms, adult entertainment, and political organizations. If we move to page six, which is the last page, there is a section regarding government speech that has been added. And then under responsibility and procedures, as in the old policy, this one is the same in that the director or designee would approve the proposal.
Which page are you on, Jen, I'm sorry?
Page six, oh no, that's okay.
15 to last?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page 15?
Yes.
Thank you.
There you are.
Okay, so where did you leave off, Jen?
It's the updated corporate sponsorship policy, last page, so, page six of the policy. And then, as in the current policy, this one also allows the director or designee to enter into an agreement for the purposes of being able to do business in a reasonable amount of time. But please note, the last sentence, it says, naming rights opportunities will be identified and submitted to the board of park commissioners for approval and seek a corporate naming rights sponsor. So, naming rights would go through the park board and then on to city council. Which the city council portion is identified in the next one. So if you go to the next attachment, this is the naming of public parks, trails, and parkways. This is the third attachment.
I have a third attachment, we don't.
To the staff report, oh.
They're backwards in the, in the natural back end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The middle one is the naming of public parks, trails, parkways, policy that Jen's talking about now.
So, what page are we on then?
Five of 15.
We got the back out of the one attachment.
So it's the one that says naming of public parks, trails, and parkways.
Thank you. I saw it earlier.
Says page one, on ours, it's page five, yeah.
Page five?
On our.
I have 10 to 15, or, did it go down there?
This is the naming of parks, public parks, trailways, parkways, et cetera.
Got it.
It starts 10.16 at the top left, okay, thank you. So this policy has been, is not officially in the council, city council policies. And, so we'd like to add that in. It's something that operationally has been happening in regards to the naming of public parks and trails. So it is the policy of the city of Lacy to utilize an established procedure to name public spaces, including public parks, trails, parkways, recreational facilities, community buildings, plazas, open space areas, habitat reserves, memorials, and accessories. So, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but I did want to note number eight. It says, naming rights may also be granted to a business entity for a mutually agreed-upon fee pursuant to the policies and procedures outlined in the policy that we just went over. So I wanted to show the connection there. And then if you turn to the next page of this policy, under procedure at the top, it says, the naming of public spaces should be approached without preconceived notions and with patience and deliberation. And then it also states, parks and recreation, corporate sponsorship, and naming rights policy should be considered prior to making a naming rights decision. So just the fact that you could consider before naming it, maybe consider the value of what it could be for a corporate opportunity. Going down to number three, it says, once a name has been approved, it should be considered permanent unless a naming rights contract with a specified term has been agreed upon. So such as the 10-year agreement for naming of a facility. And then I just wanted to highlight number six. It says, the city council, following public review and/or recommendation by the Lacy Park Board, shall designate names for park and recreation facilities. The Lacy City Council will have the prerogative of accepting or rejecting all proposals. And then the next page has 10.17, which is the naming of historical buildings. And I wanted to point out that corporate naming rights are not considered in the naming of historical buildings. It's not a recommended practice. It's more about the historical significance and cultural importance, so just wanted to point that out.
The bill is Lacy Museum?
Nope. And then if you go to the next page, just wanted to highlight the selection process. If you look at number two, it says that all suggestions, recommendations, and applications for recognizing people, organizations, sites, and events that are directly related with the community's history shall be reviewed by the Lacy Historical Commission. And then again, Lacy City Council would have the final word on accepting or rejecting all proposals. That's my update, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Can I get a motion, please? I would move to approve the Parks and Recreation Department update corporate sponsor and naming rights policy in addition with the naming of public parks and historical buildings to city council policies.
Second.
Moving seconded, is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
So, generally, and I understand our need, because our metropolitan park, parks district did not pass that, that whole thing. And our, our funding for our parks and recreations is extremely important. Part of me keeps saying, if we name something under some other name that is known for Lacy beings, for instance, the 3rd of July fireworks, if we name it something else, do we sort of take away the, the fact that it is Lacy's event? So that, that's just upfront. There's a couple of things I wanted to, when, on page, what page is this? This is page 14 of 15, and I think it's under, when we talk about, let me see, what does? I'm not exactly sure, because things are mixed up, but it's R14, and it talks about tobacco products, and it talks about cannabis and stuff.
Page five of the report.
Well, of our, yes, yeah, page five of her report. So, I wondered if we needed, because these are limitations, whether we needed to include vaping in there or not? Or is it covered under?
It's a tobacco product.
Yeah, it's still tobacco.
It still would be covered under that.
Including but not limited.
Okay, and then, so then under our, page two, which is R11, parks amenities such as recreation buildings, fields, parks, pavilions. I wondered if we really wanted to add recreation buildings there where they could be a sponsor. So, I have problems with that, because, particularly if it's permanent. If it's for a short time, it'd be different, so I'm kind of on the fence with this, frankly, even though I know it's important.
Yeah, I know that when, right from the get-go, when we, when we talked about, are we going to take this step? That it is going to be a cultural shift for the city of Lacy, right? I mean, this is, this is not something we've done in the past, this is, but this was something that we have asked the Parks Board to take a look at to help fund our, our parks programs.
Right. Right.
And so, you know, we've, we've had this conversation, and you know, when the, we brought in the, you know, when we did the RFP and we brought them in, and we went over all this, it's, you know, I know part of it feels difficult, but I also think some of it is sort of where cities are at right now when it comes to our limited funding, so.
Keep in mind, we have done some of it. I mean, we have had sponsors, our fireworks have been sponsored by Twin Star.
Right.
You know, I mean, as the chamber went out and actually recruited sponsors, you may remember a few years ago. So I mean, we have had sponsorships before. The only part of this, and I'm, I'm going to vote for this, however, I still have some heartburn over the eligibility criteria on the corporate sponsorships because I, the section here on the restrictions on what we won't allow gives me some, some angst, primarily things like, I just think there's, it's too specific in the sense of, just take as an example, we have alcohol listed on there. To me, it'd be very different if Pints and Courts, a local establishment, wanted to sponsor an event. It'd be very different to me than if Budweiser, you know, beer manufacturer wanted to sponsor it. Very different to me when you have a local business wanting to sponsor it. I would have no issues with that. But, you know, as happened at our last council work session when we got into this topic, and we could, we could sit here and debate all of these, each one of them, because every one of us is going to have different feelings about it. I mean, the deputy mayor had made a point of saying, you know, certain businesses that she wouldn't be comfortable with. We're all going to have those situations. So for that reason, I will support it, but it does give me a fair amount of angst.
And that's why I mentioned in our work session of doing a case-by-case basis. I don't see fifty people in one month or entities coming in for a sponsorship or a title, naming thing, and, you know, we could review each one, we could put on consent agenda and pull it off if someone had a problem with it.
I guess, I guess the question is, is this, would this policy not allow you to approach the council if, say, a local business like Pints and Courts did want to sponsor something, and it seems like it's a good fit, like the barbecue, I don't know, there's something that we're involved in, and it seems like it could be, is there, is there any way that you could bring that before the council, or is it just completely off the table?
My understanding, if it's written in as not eligible, then it wouldn't be eligible. So it would take it off the table. But it would give us some very good guidelines on how to move forward with this program.
I would mention, if you do look at the, the policy, look Oblarnes, because it is, they have a portion that's open to minors, that would be allowed, or like an Applebee's, because there's a restaurant component to it.
Right.
But if it's a pure bar or tavern, it would not be.
I was thinking that since, I'm sorry, since they, it's, it's not strictly alcohol, that they're, that's not their, necessarily their, their main product. People go there to eat, too. So we're not talking about a manufacturer of purely just alcohol. We're talking about somebody who serves drinks along with food. So are they, are they truly an alcohol, do they fall into that category?
That's my question.
So you do make the determination if they, if it's under, if it's open to a minor, then they're allowed?
So under alcohol, it does state this prohibition shall not prohibit advertising that includes the name of a restaurant that is open to minors.
But, okay, so what about, what about one of our community partners, the Nisqually Tribe and Red Wing Casino? They have a buffet that has nothing to do with gambling or anything like that. You know, this, I think that's why it's important that we look at a case-by-case basis, because we're not going to think of everything in, in one work session in one city council meeting. But if we look at them each individually, then we could catch, have a catch-all.
Can I, can I jump in here?
Sure.
Okay, so understanding we're trying to set a standard and a policy, anyone can come in here and appeal to our council. They can.
We could change the policy, right?
Yeah.
Well, you can always.
Well, okay, so the current policy, we, we can always vote to change it.
That's, that's correct. I guess what I'd want to caution council on is we're getting into free speech issues, and we, we need clear guidance and a system where, because admittedly, every one of these categories can be debated multiple directions, and what we want to avoid is the appearance of favoritism one way or the other, and we need clear guidance that can be implemented by staff. And if, if, if council wants to change, or if circumstances warrant, or community, you know, citizens speaking to council warrant council making a change, that can always be done to the policy later.
Right. But not at the time of the situation.
Correct, not at the time.
Right, because again, we follow into what we discussed at our last work session. We could change it for future, but we couldn't change it to make an exception for that particular business.
Correct. When you're creating policy for, for, for speech and signage and sponsorship, it, it just needs to be clear, and decisions need to be made, and then move forward.
Which, which is why I think, as we discussed, I know there's, some of this can, you can always find the exception to the rule, but this is pretty good, standards of what I think our community expects. So I am pretty comfortable with this at the end of the day. Councilor Cox?
I am, too, and I thank you, Dave, for pointing out the need for a clear policy that's, you know, black and white for staff to interpret, you know, to go forward with, because a squishy policy just puts, puts you guys in an impossible position, so.
Well, it puts council at risk. It puts the city at risk.
Well, all of us, yeah. And I think that.
Councilor Miller?
Just for the record, I disagreed with the church being on this list, and part of the reason for that is, is that when we do need somebody to fill in a nonprofit space, it seems to be the, one of the first places that we go to, and they step up and they help the city. But I do understand the reason why it's on there. I'm, I'm going to support it. I just, it's just something that I, I don't necessarily agree with.
Any other discussion? Yes. I, I think when you take in consideration our revenues, that, and with the uptick and downtick of the economies, good or bad, and those revenues go up or down, this is, kind of bridges those gaps. So that's a huge benefit to the quality of life for the citizens of Lacey when it comes to, especially times of recession. Paths of reserves and great times, too. Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved to second to approve the Parks and Recreation Department update corporate sponsorship and naming rights policy in addition of the naming rights of public parks and historical buildings to city council policies. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Just one other item. I'd like to call Jessica Branna. We have the point-in-time count that is coming up later this month. I thought council would appreciate an update on how we're participating in that count.
Thank you. The Thurston Point-in-Time Count is January twenty-third, so next Thursday, and it goes all day, and it's countywide. Entire Thurston County participates. This is the fifteenth annual, actually.
I'm sorry, what was this we were doing? It's not, it's not.
No, he just added.
It's just an update. Can you clarify what, I didn't hear what it was.
This is just a quick update on Lacey's participation in the Thurston County Point-in-Time Count, which is our annual homeless census. This is the fifteenth annual homeless census that Thurston County has been doing, and Lacey's been participating in. And there's going to be many events countywide and a lot of volunteers working. And I'll just give you a little information about how the data is used once it's collected, and just some of the things that the city is doing specifically, and then in partnership with the rest of the county. So the point-in-time data, locally, the results are compiled into the county's annual point-in-time census, often referred to as the annual census report, and it does a couple things for us. One, it provides an accurate count of homeless people, the causes of their homelessness, and other demographic information. It quantifies needs based on numbers of homeless people, which in turn brings in federal and state dollars to provide homeless shelter, transitional housing, and other services. It helps assess resources that are currently available, and then analyzes needs and resource gaps, so it can serve as a basis for local strategic responses to homelessness. And so like I said, each city is working with the county to really focus on their own census, and so they're really letting us as the city decide how we want to do that work. And we're doing a couple things. First is just census-taking in the known areas. We have an amazing resource at the city right now, which is Officer Fichek in our police department, and Terrence Mitchell, who goes by Mitch, and he's our community action council navigator. They've been doing a lot of work the last six months to really figure out where people are in Lacey, what their situation is, connecting with them almost daily, and trying to get them resources. And so they're going to lead a couple volunteer teams out in some of the camps they know and regions of the city, they know where people are, and just try to get them to fill out census forms and talk to them a little bit so they can really help us collect some good information. Also, St. Martin's is providing a team of volunteers for us, and they're going to help us work on a community event. A number of just Lacey residents have signed up to help us out, too. And we're having an event at the Veterans Hub, just like we did last year. And the new event we're going to do this year is with partnership with City Life Church. They're going to open their doors from four to seven p.m., and sponsors are providing dinner giveaways, a place for families to connect to resources like healthcare and other social services, and then just build community. And I think what's interesting about homelessness in Lacey is, I mean, based on my conversations with Officer Fichek, there's the estimate about fifty to seventy-five people in camps, in RVs, and in cars around Lacey. But when you look at the North Thurston Public School District numbers, it's about nine hundred students, and they're not really counted in our point-in-time count. They're counted through their schools, through McKenna Vento, but they're not really counted in this annual PIT count. So we're doing a better job this year attracting those families and students to come to our community event, so we can actually get them counted. Like I said, this is tied to federal and state dollars, so if we want to really figure out who's homeless in Lacey and get them what they need, we need good counts and good numbers. So we're making a bigger effort this year than we did last year to do that. And if you want a huge list, there's just a lot of events going on all over the county, and this is just a specific flyer for our event at City Life, if you just want to look at it. That's all.
Thank you.
So, so do we contact you if we want to volunteer?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm still trying to see if I can, but okay.
Okay. It's a, it's a next Thursday, the January twenty-third. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, understanding general committees, is the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Utilities Committee met on the sixth of January noon. Myself and the new council members, Kunkel and Miller, were present. I was elected the, the chair again, and we had a, I believe it's a four, yeah, four-item agenda. The first one was the introduction of the Terry Cargill Reservoir. Terry Cargill Reservoir, also known as Three Three Seven Reservoir in the city. It's a, it's a composite elevated tank that will hold three point two million gallons of water and be used for storage to moderate water pressure. Other reservoirs in the city have been named, but this reservoir will be named after a public works employee who's served the city for over forty years. Construction scheduled for two thousand twenty-one and go through two thousand twenty-two. There's one thing I wanted to do, I meant to ask during the naming rights and corporate sponsorship, was these reservoirs or some, some structure like this similar could possibly, you know, be added to that discussion? And I just forgot it, and then got reminded when I was going through this, so. Let's see here, I've, I've known Terry for years, put my business hat on, and just dealing with the city, and we have mutual friends. He's a great guy. He loves Lacey. He eats, breathes, community, and so I couldn't think of a better way to honor such a great man. The second one was the Nisqually Watershed Planning, Plan Funding Request. Nisqually Indian Tribe in the city of Lacey and Olympia participate, participated as active members in the WRIA eleven planning unit that oversaw the Nisqually Watershed Management Plan up to two thousand nineteen. Let's see here, the last of the available grants for the planning area will expire at the end of two thousand nineteen. The planning unit desires to continue implementation of the plan and continuing the transition from planning to implementation and oversight, as interim source of funds, funds are needed to support the efforts. So, and estimated budget is forty-one thousand dollars. Ten thousand each from the two cities, Olympia and Lacey, and the tribe would, Nisqually Tribe would provide twenty-one thousand. Funding this presents an opportunity to further the intent of the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the city of Lacey's accord, signed in two thousand fourteen, which recognizes our shared interests related to environmental and resource stewardship, and agrees to explore the opportunities for strengthening ties between the city and the tribes for mutual benefit.
Is that something that's been coming from this council, or?
Yeah, it will be going to council.
And I honestly can't think of a better way to celebrate our partnerships and, and environment with the tribe who's called this area their home for thousands of years. We went over the stoned broadcast broadband franchise renewal, so I won't go over that. And the last one was the Lacey Fire District Three Mullen Road Annexation. We kind of went over annexation as well, so I'll just cut my report short there.
Yeah, so if you remember right, the, the Fire District tried to go through an annexation process before, and the annexation actually showed that it was going into the street, which then would have caused all a bunch of issues, and so we had it put on pause, and then we've, since then, we met with the county and said, you know, there has to be a way through this. He goes, well, just have the annexation go up, right up to the street, and then there's no problem. And they're like, okay, deal. So that's, so the Fire District resubmitted that annexation request with showing the lines just going up to the street, and so it should, it should be on its way. So I'm glad.
That one should be pretty easy.
I'm, I'm glad that worked out for them, because they are, of course, would like to work with the city of Lacey for their planning and permitting process, and this will help them out in the future. So I'm glad we were able to accommodate that. So next up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
And thanks for the delay. Let me regroup to give this one. Community Relations and Public Affairs met directly after the Utilities Committee. Myself and Councilmember Cox and Kunkel were there. We haven't determined the chair yet because we didn't know what the assignments were going to be. It was a three-item agenda, and the first was accessory dwelling units. The goal of the accessory dwelling units, or ADU program, is to provide pre-approved construction plans that make it easier, less expensive for homeowners, to plan, design, obtain permits, and ultimately build, attach ADUs on their property. Approximately twenty-three hundred residential lots are at least, are at least ten thousand square feet in size, and the affordable housing strategy identifies the development of pre-approved ADU plans as a priority action item to address homeless housing supplies. Staff has been coordinating and collaborating with the local building and lending community. The official rollout will accumulate in a community workshop February eighth, where residents can learn more about the program, meet the builders, lenders, property management companies, and city staff.
Yeah, so it's February eighth, right here, from, from ten to noon, and so anyone who's, everyone in the city of Lacey should have received a letter if you qualify to have an ADU on your property. And so if you're interested, please come February eighth and learn more about it. Well, like I said, they'll have, the financial institutions will be here, there will, the builders will be here, and so it's going to be a streamlined process, and we're really looking forward, this has been a goal for a while, and so it's finally come to fruition, and we really hope to see, you know, several ADUs come up, and it's a, be a great option for someone that's interested in it. So I'm really excited about that.
And one last noteworthy part on that is Lacey Tumwater and Olympia all received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Commerce, and we all leveraged that together to kind of, to help the cause. The next, the next agenda item was Blue Star Byway Memorial Marker. Staff presented a markup, a mock-up of the Friendly Flower Gardens Memorial, the Club's memorial and bench, and I have a picture of it here. This is, I don't know if you can get it on TV or not, but installation at the Civic Plaza will be completed by June fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and the club recommends scheduling a dedication ceremony on Flag Day, June fourteenth. It is the same day of the groundbreaking of the Gold Star Family Memorial. The club will have a fundraiser on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, at eight a.m. to ten forty-five a.m. at the Applebee's in Lacey. I have also a flyer here that the public can access at City Hall here. And there's a suggestion that perhaps a Purple Heart City Sign could be placed on Golf Club Road or somewhere close to this, the Civic Park. Road or somewhere close to this, the Civic Park or the Lacey Veteran Service Hub. The last one was a corporate sponsorship and naming rights. We covered that, so that is my report.
Next up is Boards, Commissions, and Campaign Reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor.
The, I only have one report. The Olympic Regional Clean Air Agency met on January 8th. And the Finance Committee, which rolled into also the General Committee, learned from staff that the, they did a presentation to look at AWC's health program to find out whether it's as better than the PEBB program, P-E-B-B program. So, and it is, so they're going to stay with AWC's health program. And then we also learned that we are midway with our revenue and expenditures and it's looking good, that nothing's out of kilter. So at our board meeting, we discussed a conflict on November 11th, which is Veterans' Day. And so usually we take December off, so we try, we made a motion to change our month that we take off, which is also July and December. We decided to make it November and July. And then it was reported by our air quality scientist, Dr. Hadley, that for November 2019, Lacey had 19 good air quality days and 11 moderate quality days. And we were very close to being in the range of unhealthy for sensitive groups on one or two days. And that was because the stagnant air and because people, because of the stagnant air didn't move out the, you know, there wasn't enough wind and stuff to move air quality around. And then people also decided to burn outdoors and use their wood stoves and stuff, so that really made a difference. In December, it was only 19, I mean, it was not as bad. It was 29 good days with only two moderate days. And then the only other thing is, I mentioned about Orca's use of the Purple Air Monitors. And so last year, we replaced the Optical Particle Counters, OPCs, with Purple Air Sensors because they produce similar data quality if you recalculate them to meet the national standard. And they're much easier to use and are really flexible at the site location. And a lot of your community people have these in their homes and, but they, but if we put the calculation so that it's correct up on our website, it will agree and we can then coordinate with our community to use these. And what we'll do is use the, what we, what the staff will do is put them by our other sensors and to supplement the, the data being collected. And I think that that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Cox.
Okay. Regional Housing Council did not meet, they were scheduled to have met today, but Tombwater's city manager, John Doan, was being honored tonight at Leadership Thurston. And all of the Tombwater members wanted to be there, so we decided the respectful thing to do would be to cancel. And I'm sorry that we couldn't be there to, to join John in that honor. Health and Human Services Council met on Monday and we learned that there will be about $2.5 million in state and federal housing funds available this year to award to grants to service providers for housing. We heard presentations from some of those providers about their thoughts on priorities this year. These providers happen to be the leaders of different teams within the Housing Action Team and Thurston Thrives. And that, that was very informative. We'll meet again on February 10th, at which point we will refine the priority list, the types of projects to be funded. And that list will be used to advertise for proposals for grants and also as the criteria for scoring grant applications. That process will take us until May, at which point the HHSC Council will vote on the final list of recommendations that go to the County Commission. So it's, it's exciting to see those dollars come in. Intercity Transit met last night, January 15th. And of most interest to the council is we conducted a public hearing on the four variations proposed for the new Route 65 in northeast Lacey. It's supposed to be starting in March. Two of the four proposals emerged as the most popular from public response received so far. Staff is going to bring a single proposal for consideration in our February 5th meeting, so hopefully we'll know by then what our route's going to look like. Both of the two that were the top favored routes would run along Britton Parkway, cross Marvin, and then take the entire Willamette Loop on up to 41st rather than one of them cuts up north up Hogan Bay. That was not a favored one. And then the other, the difference between the two is that they would originate at the Lacey Transit Center. One would go over to Slater Kenny and go on up to 15th, but would stop at the high school there and be of service that way, and then go on out toward Britton Parkway. The other would go out Martin Way and go north up Carpenter to Britton. So things to be said either way. And one of the things we did ask staff to do last night was to get in touch with the North Thurston School District and see if they had a, a solid, you know, reason for wanting one or the other of those routes. We also got to meet the recipients of the annual surplus van grant program. These tend to be service organizations and they're doing some amazing things. And we got to actually hear about how they're using these vans. So the groups that got the vans this year are KAKUA, the Coastal Community Action Program, the WAYA Outdoor Institute, and the Veterans for Suicide Prevention, which all had great programs. Just FYI, the Intercity Transit has been assisting this week in the code blue hazardous weather thing. In addition to, you know, helping get people to shelter, they've also had a standing reservation for the code blue staff for two community vans where they could transport people if necessary, as well as their belongings, to shelters. So I thought that was kind of nice support. And a couple other just quick takes here. You probably have noticed less and less advertising on buses. The, you know, we decided that we would just let the existing contracts play out and no new advertising would be accepted. And we have heard from the agencies that, that handle that for us that there have been no complaints at all from, from people. Maintenance staff has removed about half of the fare boxes from the buses that had them and they were going to start on the dial-up lift vehicles soon. And although we don't have data yet for the January 1st change to free rides, the drivers and just riders are anecdotally reporting that they're already seeing an increase in ridership on the buses, which was something we hoped for, and that there have not been, there's not been trouble at all among those riders. So, and as pointed out earlier, the Zero Fare is attracting national attention. So that's been kind of fun. Regional Planning Council met January 10th. Among the actions we took, we're adopting the 2020 operating budget, which includes revenues of four point, almost 4.4 million. We're going to elect officers at our February 7th meeting. Deputy Mayor Cynthia Pratt could well become our next vice chair. Her name has put in, been put in there. And Yelm's mayor, J.W. Foster, is the likely successor to Nathaniel Jones as, as chair of that board. Let's see.
You said that there's some, some new bus routes heading out to Willamette. I remember the residents of Jubilee really wanting some, some, some buses out there. Will any of those buses reach them?
Yeah. The Willamette Loop will take them up to 41st and that should get Jubilee covered.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Oh, definitely.
Awesome.
Yeah. Oh, I guess one other little exciting footnote is the Regional Planning Council staff administers the rural transit program and they have decided to go fare-free for those folks as well. So I thought that was kind of a nice, nice addition. Thurston Thrives will meet on January 27th. And Lenny, I think until February 1st, you were the alternate for Thurston Thrives? Is that correct? Okay. Well, starting February 1st.
Starting February 1st, yeah.
One of you, I'm going to be out of town, so could one of you please?
Or the new, Malcolm, you're, you're the new person to Thurston Thrives.
Yes.
And so if you'd like, if you, if you, if you can make that appointment, maybe you guys can talk after council and see if you can.
January 27th.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we had our executive committee for, meeting for Thurston Thrives yesterday. And it turns out, even though I won't be on the coordinating council any longer, they have asked me to remain on the executive committee to give input from city perspective.
Perfect.
I'll do that.
Great, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
All right. So TCOM 911 met on January 8th for the new system and a project management company has been selected and hired. They'll have three dedicated employees full-time on this project. That'll include a project manager, an engineer, and a quality assessment person to, to monitor the, the installation of everything from Motorola. So excited to have that project up and running. Also, on December 10th, there was a meeting which our city manager attended that TCOM held to discuss with the partners and the stakeholders potential changes to our intergovernmental agreement. And the feedback, some of which came from our city manager, has all, was all adopted at our last meeting. So all of the suggestions made by the cities to changes for the IJ have been adopted. That actually went out today. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but both Dave and Scott should receive that for review by the jurisdictions to get back to, you know, so we can get that thing approved and done. The goal is to have it done in 30 days and be done with it. That was good news. And then lastly, on that strategic planning meeting, three-day meeting from the 24th of March to the 26th of March. So if anyone has a bunch of free time and wants to see what's going on at TCOM, welcome to come join us. EMS Medic 1 met yesterday. Couple of things going on there. For starters, they, they'll be contacting us shortly to see about coming out to present their new comprehensive plan. So I was one of the people that sat on a comprehensive planning committee to create the first comprehensive plan that Medic 1 EMS has ever done. It's a pretty thorough document, talks a lot about how, how to handle changes that are coming. So it doesn't talk the specifics of what those changes are because we all know that things are going to change in the EMS world over the next several years with community medicine and different things. But it's a guideline for how to adopt and how to look at those changes for what makes sense for our system. That is, was presented yesterday to the, to the board. We've given the board a month to make comments. That'll come back to us at our next month's meeting for approval. Once that's done, they would like to come out and present, so let's see if we can't get them on a work session schedule. In 2019, Medic 1 and EMS trained 6,400 Thurston County residents in CPR. It's a pretty staggering number. It's, you know, that is a huge part of the reason that the second highest survival rate for cardiac arrest in the, in the United States is right here in Thurston County. The only place that has a higher rate of success is actually King County, Seattle area. But second in the entire country and a huge part of that is because of how many people we have trained in CPR. So if you're, if you're going to have a heart attack, it's a really good place to have it, right here in Thurston County.
Just don't have one right now.
Yeah, please. Two new paramedics have just been hired and there's two more in a training class right now. That will fill two openings, which will put us at full capacity. We'll have every slot filled for paramedics in the county, at least for the short term. Several retirements this year. In fact, a lot of retirements potentially this year. So there's going to be a lot of openings and a lot of work going on to try to make sure we have enough paramedics to staff the 24/7 need. And then just last, I thought this was just kind of interesting. Tombwater, not too long ago, hired a consultant to do a study about regionalization of fire services throughout the county. They looked at a lot of different departments and their, the outcome of that study was that there's actually four departments that they think it would make sense for them to consider actually looking more closely at, at doing something with regionalization. That includes Fire District 3, which is our fire district, Olympia, Tombwater, and East Olympia. So there are ongoing meetings. Those four entities are actually now meeting together to talk about if it makes sense and where it might make sense and how they can do some things that may benefit the citizens in general. So I thought that was pretty interesting. And that is my report.
East Olympia or West Lacey? Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Let's see, we've got the LTAC. I have not been to their meeting. The VCB, I have not been to that meeting.
And you weren't assigned to that meeting.
No, I wasn't.
This was the kind of a rollover of the.
From the previous.
Prior, yeah, so.
Okay.
It's just the.
Just for the record.
Just TCAT.
Just for the record. For the TCAT meeting, we just got together and tightened up some of the, the things that we're doing for the community conversation. This one is called Pathways for Hope. It is January 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Lacey Community Center, which is at 6729 Pacific Avenue Southeast. And the, the goal of, of the community conversation is to, to get like-minded people together, community leaders together, people who have firsthand contact with, with, you know, potential victims, survivors. I, I won't go into all the statistics of how many people actually come up missing a year in the United States or worldwide, but it's, it's a significant number and a lot of that happens right here along this I-5 corridor because there's so many ways in and out. And so the, the, the design is to get people talking about it. You recognize the, the red flags, the signs of trafficking and what to do about it when you see it. And so if, if you want to go out to that, that is January 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Lacey Community Center, which is at 6729 Pacific Avenue Southeast here in Lacey.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Steben.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Both Community Action Council and Lacey South Sound Chamber, the forum, were canceled for this month. And so Solid Waste Advisory Committee met last Wednesday, started at 10:00 and ended right when the chamber was supposed to start. And we greeted our new Solid Waste Manager, Mark McElroy. Proud to say he's a retired Army veteran. So that was, yeah, it was Navy, beat Army. Might only last a year, so I got to get those days in, right? And then also, we elected new chair and new vice chair, so I'm no longer the chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. It's Jim Cooper from the City of Olympia. And then Joan Cathy is the vice chair for City of Tombwater. We had an update on the Solid Waste Management Plan and we further discussed whether or not we should go back and do this, do it so it can get through ecology, so it's not rejected. We're going to continue that discussion into next month's meeting, which brings me to the next agenda item that we looked at was the RFP update. And honestly, in my opinion, the number one priority is this Solid Waste Management Plan is what kind of guides everything else. is what kind of guides everything else. It's like, it's the cart and they got, it's, if, if they're moving forward with the RFP process, kind of has a cart in front of the horse thing if you don't have your solid waste management plan that, I mean, the solid waste management plan was ready to be enacted and voted on when Lenny was last on the thing. And this plan is from two thousand nine, so it's grossly, grotesquely outdated. And so that, that is my caution. It's a, you know, I think we need to take a little step back, do it properly, get it right and move forward. And, and sometimes taking a step back speeds things up, so. Other than that, the, we had five, six other agenda items, but the hour and a half came and went and so we'll just continue on those agenda items next month. And other than that, I left out, given during my committee meeting on the Blue Star Byway, we're looking at combining the efforts of the Gold Star Family Memorial, the Blue Star Byway and Flag Day altogether. You know how successful Flag Day is, you know, and we all want the, the VFW and the American Legion and their honor guards and, you know, band and cannon and the fire department and the big American flag. So it just made sense. So we're going to look at cross-promoting and, and attending each other's events on the same day.
Great.
And then last thing is, everybody, most people that know me know I'm a Seahawks fan, but I think the Seahawks did pretty good this year. Everybody should be proud of them and they're great community partners, too. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kunkel.
I am looking forward to meeting with the Economic Development Council later this month and I'm also very proud of our Seahawks. You know, they're going to do great next season, but it was a great, good, good run this time around, so thank you.
Thanks. We've reached the end of our agenda. I just want again to say how proud I am of my daughter for winning the overall grand prize for the bookmark for Lacey Loves Lead. Lacey loves to read, very proud of her, she did a great job. But we've reached the end of our agenda and so until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.